... We have two people absent today, Dame Thornton and Bruce Van. We do have also several additions to the agenda. You have the number six under business. Review and consider approval of the FFA for alumni. Well, and we have four through nine under personnel. Any further discussion? All those in favor can signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. District 741 is crowded on. We don't have...
We don't have any this time, but I am expecting to have a long list at the next product, so.
Works good for me. And I don't have anything down here for anyone for public comment. Assuming you have none. So I'm looking for motions to move or to approve or correct amendments to the made papers 2013 regular board meeting. Motion's been approved and corrected as to June 5, 2013 special board meeting. Do you want to do that in my motion? Okay. Okay. I move. So I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. On to the first item of business. Review and consider approval of the revised 2012-2013 revenue and expenditure budgets.
We went over this budget at the last meeting, and this is just the second time to be able to answer any questions that the board has. It's really the revision of the 2012-2013 budget. So if there's questions, I can certainly answer them. Otherwise, I guess I would ask for approval.
Does anybody have any questions? Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number two. Review proposed 2013-2014 revenue expenditure budgets.
This would be exhibit number B. And if you take a look across, it's built the same way that 2012-2013. We'll try to always give the same format so that we get... If you take a look at, just starting at the top, the general fund, the 2012-2013 revenue was that 8,738,000. The proposed 13.40 revenue is now 9,69,000. Paying the changes, the positive 330,000, that's caused by a number of things. One is our referendum, and we are getting some additional funds from the state. The way it looks right now, I'm thinking about 100, maybe 125,000. They're looking at about a 1.5% increase. Still not sure how that will shake off, particularly in the 13-14 budget. Looks initially like we get more money, but they're also, this coming year, they are not paying for the all-day kindergarten. That goes into effect the 14-15 school year. But when they're doing that, and I'll bring that to the board, and we'll have more discussion about it, they're also changing the ratios, which means that, yeah, it looks like we're getting a lot more money than we actually are, because where they're adding ratio to the kindergarten, they're reducing ratio in other areas. So we'll have a discussion about that as we start talking a little bit more about the 14-15 budget. And then the expenditures, 12-13, 8,930, proposed 8,964. That's a change of 34,000. Then the food service goes down the same way. The 490, the proposed for the new one is 502. Difference in revenue would be 11,300. And we are going to have to raise our, we're getting directives from the state to raise to a certain level the food service, the cost for people to buy lunch. Not our option. We have to get to a certain threshold, and then I'll bring that forward probably in the July meeting to have the discussion with the board, and you'll get more information on that.
We've had to do that before.
We had to do it this last year, this current year, and we need to continue to adjust it.
How did you come up with the 502? Was that just by the number of the surveys that were this year compared to the next year? Or probably that...
That's, we did that, plus we think we're going to have the cost adjustment, so we've also put that in there. It's our best guess on where we will be based on what we think we'll have to raise it up to, and the amount of lunches that...
Oh, so you're figuring to raise the raise into the 502,000?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. It's our best prediction, at least at this point. And the change is 11,300. And then it talks about the expenditures, the same in the change. For the community ed, the difference that you see there is that, at this particular time, and I won't want to have a discussion with the board, because they will not pay for all-day kindergarten for this next year. It may be something that the board and I, we will want to discuss whether we should do that regardless. When I get down to the fund budget, you'll see kind of where we're at total, at least projections at this point, but I think that maybe at the next board meeting, we could have a discussion. If we wanted to go down that road, it would cost about 31,000. The difference where you see between the revenue and the expenditures is really cost because of that. This year, it's really, has to run through our extended date program, which means we have to run it through community ed. And that's where the majority of the differences in community ed is, that's about a $31,000 teacher that's in that range, that's caused most of those differences for community ed program. If we don't, if we were to continue to do what we did this year, where the parents charge, then that would change back by about 31,000 both ways. So it's not as much of a difference that you're seeing as in actuality. It's mainly the all-day kindergarten piece that's causing that, because our community ed program has been running on the good side for quite a period. We'll see that down at the end. The main difference for the capital really is the health and safety dollars. Remember, we did an awful lot, and we're always one year behind. So that's still the main piece of that. In health and safety, we continue to levy the most, and we don't always use those funds. Dead services are the building things. The reason for the negative there is that the state adjusts those. So when it shows up as a negative 144,000, those dollars will really go back, they'll levy less out of the public in the next year. So it's their way of making sure that we don't create a big fund balance in those funds, because we levy specifically to pay for the buildings that we built, the addition and the auditorium. So if that fund balance is too much, it goes back to the public. So, and the state adjusts that.
Okay. I mean, why did that, I mean, why couldn't you buy down on some of that stuff? If you had extra in there?
I think it's set in place, Mark, so it continues. We just levy for it, we pay for it, because it's all set in place. I don't think we do that. They won't let us, they won't let us take those funds and pay off the projects sooner. We can only levy really towards the exact amount that we need. We levy to the max to make sure that we're covered, but then it adjusts as that fund balance builds up, and the state has the rules on when they take those dollars.
Since, from the state, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, it would be nice if we could do that, because then we would pay it all off soon, but I don't believe that's an option for us. But I think it's a good question, and I'll double check on that. Then the trust fund is just a trust fund that they have. It's really, as we get less and less interest, they're kind of just trying to use the interest in that, but as we get less and less interest, of course, you don't gain as much money. Then the total deficit revised for 12-13 was 347,000. The proposed really is 31,878. If you go down to the cost of, or the deficit budget by fund, it kind of goes through that. Last year, we really looked at 192,000 of deficit spending. If you look back at the proposed budget way back when, they talked about 198,000 deficit spending. That's pretty close. Next year, I'm looking at actually being able to put, well, we've got about 140, 104,000 that we're looking at the good right now. This is the first reading that, you know, I'm going to continue to work with John and I, and this may be even by the time we get to that second reading, if we can find ways to be more efficient, or if we think that we've overbudgeted for a particular fund. Food service, the main thing for that negative piece is that we really didn't add anything until this year to cover some of the expenses for the new rules that they have to follow. And we're projecting that we're going to need to spend some more so that our food service people continue to have a little bit more time in order to prepare the food the way they need to do. Community ed is on solid grounds. Capital, we definitely spent quite a bit this last year, but again, time, really health and safety issues with that. This year, yeah, we're projecting that we'll have a little bit more. And then the debt service, again, is that adjustment. We suspect that they will adjust more of that down for the debt service. And the trust fund really is just the trust fund. We get so much for the interest on that. So estimated fund balance, if you look down, particularly on 2013, that kind of goes through what was projected. And on 2014, you'll notice that now the fund balance, if we leave it the way it is, we're hoping and projecting that it'll be up to 343,000. And then the food service, community ed, all on solid grounds. Health and safety, again, that includes both the capital and the health and safety. It's broken down by the capital only is 112, and the debt service 29, and the trust fund will be 80,000. That's kind of the vast common dirty questions. And certainly, if any questions come up, this is just the first reading. It's just more informational as we bring them back to approve it. It will be at the next meeting. If you have questions, just send me an email, and I will make sure that not only do I answer that question during the next meeting, but we also answer it to the public. So if you have one, and send me an email, I'll bring that, we should bring that question up in front of the community also. And there's no action on this, because it's just a question.
Move on to number three, seen the questions. Review and consider approval of the 2013-2014 school year budget.
Well, it's been an adventure, but a lot of good discussion, I think, on the part of the staff and myself on what they'd like. In the end, we did do a little bit of compromise in it, because it was the parent-teacher conferences that there was a lot of discussion about. So we kind of compromised. We were going to do the parent-teacher conferences one way, one time, first time, and a different way. The thing that we gained when we did it, the one way is that we did gain back a half a day, or an early release time, a couple hours for staff development, which is positive. I am going to do a survey with parents. I'll inform them, then I'm going to do a survey at the start of the year before the first parent-teacher conferences, and then we have a second one. I'll do the survey to really find out which way is the most effective for them. If they have a particular way that they really like versus the other one, then I think, again, because they're parent-teacher conferences, we really do need to do it that way for the parents. But we'll do a survey. You can kind of go through it yourself. It shows the in-service days. It does meet the teacher's contract. I made up snow days on the right-hand bottom. December 23rd, March 25th, April 21st, May 30th, and June 2nd would be days that we would do it. I was looking at President's Day, but I did find out that in order to do that, you have to put a clause into teacher's contract that allows us to do that. And we do not have that clause at this point.
Why do you want to say that?
Because I think it's kind of a national holiday, so I think that it's the way of the state saying, because it's a national holiday, really it has to be, can't really break any of the rules in favor of that, so. But I did check with the state on this one, and you have to have a clause, and if that says it's okay to use that as a day because of that. So we would get done on 29th, would be the last day with students. The 30th would be for staff if, we don't have any snow days, or too many snow days And this does meet the language of the teacher's contract. It's 171 student days, 184 days with staff. I can certainly give you more information if we can go by item by item, if you want.
Any questions?
I guess my only question would be, is graduation asked me that first day after, first Sunday after the last day of school?
I just did it kind of in comparison. Do you want to talk about possibly moving it up a week or back a week?
Might to the 8th, just in case if there was more snow days or whatever, that we would have to go into the first week of June and...
You don't, you get a whole week of people sitting around waiting for graduation ceremony.
But what is other school down? Do you ever think other schools have...
I think it varies between schools. Or I don't know if you know or know that.
Yeah. I mean, it really does vary. I know within our district, we've always done it, that first week right after. You will see, I mean, you'll see some districts graduate kids before the rest of the kids are done, and though their graduations will be during the week, like they'll be like a Tuesday night, and the rest of the kids still have school. So it's really what has worked for our district. I know from talking with John, they did it, chose it on a Sunday because it was a weekend when relatives and people could come down and visit, et cetera. I do know we need basically three days to get, it's nice to have all the kids' paperwork and transcripts and grades all confirmed before the graduation. So, you know, if we're moving it up, we'd have to look at those senior days, which wouldn't be a big deal to adjust either, but we'd have to look at that as well.
I just have to...
Yeah. From my point...
I mean, it's worked well.
It's just what they've always done, and that's why, that's the way it was placed on the calendar.
And I'd say it's worked well from the management of the students and letting them finish up and everything.
And when we did our meet and confer with the teachers, it was not brought up as wanting to move it or anything else, so we just put it towards that.
So I'm there, taking a motion to approve the calendar. So, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion been made, but signed by you. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Review and consider approval of the five-year plan for capital expenditure facilities.
I know that Lou and Deb and David have been part of this particular piece. I can certainly go over this line, item by line item, with you if you so choose. One of the bigger points of discussion really was, we've always done lawnmowers in a certain way, our tractors, and we're going to try a different way to try to reduce it. We just do not have enough dollars to do everything that we had wanted. If you take a look, we had really 582,840 worth of projects we'd like to do, and we didn't have near that amount of dollars. What we ended up spending was, I think, 334,000 dollars for that particular, these projects. It does leave us a balance of, let's see, 137,000, or, let's see, where is that? Yep. We do 137,000. I would, I'd feel much more comfortable if I had 200,000 in my reserve, but quite frankly, we had so many projects to do that we needed to reduce that much. So we can certainly, as important as our goodness, as much detail as you want. The health and safety, just to be aware, is that it's hard to predict that, because we can only use health and safety dollars for certain things. So when you see the carryover, because on the left-hand side is really the 2013-2014 budget. For the health and safety, kind of, we just run the same budget across, and we have to adjust that as we need it, depending on what we're informed that we do need to fix. And then I just, we just go down, example, resurface the track. We moved off to 2017-18. This is a five-year budget. In the past, what the board has had, has had a separate plan for each year, and when we talked about it in committee, we decided it would be much easier to just have all of them go across so that you can kind of see where things are fitting, and then go down. So it's all on one page, but a few pages long, but we don't have a separate document for each year. The other piece that probably should be noted is that when we looked at things, there were about 242,000 dollars worth of projects we had to, we didn't have an option, from roof leases to technology leases to things that we had to pay for on a yearly basis. When you look at it, you'd have to pay for 242,000 dollars worth of things, and your budget is around 334,000. It does not leave you a lot of wiggle room. And I do think that as we start to talk about facility projects, that would be something that, from my point of view, we do need roof work done. But it takes a big, I mean, that's about 120,000 out of our budget just to have our roofs fixed. So it'd certainly be something I would bring up, that if we could get more of that done, we would certainly have more of a budget in order to do some of the other things that we think we need to take care of. So specific questions, you want me to just keep on going down? Yeah, we're going to do some resurfacing of the middle school parking, have some of the secondary parking lots. High school north lot, we're going to still code it for next year. Other big projects, the upkeep of our ball fields, we had reduced that down to 9,000 from 10,000, just because we had so many projects. And that's upkeep of all of our fields.
I guess my only question would be, to the, to the, go back to the lawnmower tractors instead.
Yep.
That was on the board when we first implemented that process. And I guess my concern is just like any other concern, if you leave it go so long, there's something that's going to be kind of prohibited to do anything, and then you just have basically junk to keep things going.
If you take...
How are we, how are we going to, and I understand diverting it out and stuff like that, but how do we get it to the point where we can get those back in, some sort of a routine?
Yeah. If you take a look down on, it'd be the second page, not the second, it'd be the second actual physical page. If you take a look down at district-wide, it talks about the tractor. What we've done is we've started the budget all the way across for tractor replacement in the five-year plan, and also tractor maintenance in the five-year plan. So what we're hoping to do over the course of the year is save...
But that's got zero dollars on it.
Well, it's got zero dollars on the first year.
I got zero dollars. I remember what I...
There's 4,000 each year.
There's 4,000 each year, both for maintenance and for replacement. So what we're, what we're hoping to do is save money to, so that we've got some money. Now, the key to that is saving the money. Because we have so many projects, it's going to be easy to say, oh, we got this pot of money that we're saving to buy tractors. We're going to have to be physically responsible and not spend that money on other projects. We need to save that money so that has our tractors goal.
About 10 other tractors you're looking at? That was the proposal.
Oh, the, are you looking at the lawn, the morgue? Oh, that was, what was talked about, that particular one was a zero-turn tractor just to mow. And when we discussed it, what we came up with is that we just couldn't afford that. The reason that we're looking at that, and I think we should continue to discuss it, because you do save an awful lot of labor time, because they just mow a lot faster. And that's why it was put on kind of the wish list type of thing, to possibly look at that in the future if we ever were able to afford it. But when we finally shook it out, we didn't have the dollars to look at.
Okay. So for the replacement, then it's 4,000. Are we able to replace tractors at 4,000 dollars?
Well, for the first time, you have about four years' worth of warranty. Okay? So we have four years to start building that amount up. It's our hope that those tractors will last longer than four years. All right?
We've been around with enough miles on it to even, or minutes on it to be able to test the laws.
The discussion was to, this is new, and it's...
I'm just afraid one day we're going to sit here, and then we don't have tractors to pull the field, which we have a zillion fields out there. We have so much lawn. I mean, what is an average tractor right now? What is it every year? What, only hours are...
Costs 200.
200 hours per tractor?
Yep.
So that's 2,400, 6,000, or 600, 600 hours?
Two of the tractors make the 200 dollars. The other one's up, just has the brush on for the fields and stuff, so you probably ends up with 100 by the time it's on the snow field.
So by the time you get to the third year, where they're still all on warranties, you're going to have enough at least for one tractor, as long as we continue to save them, save the money. That's the key to this, is that if you don't save the money...
But I know exactly what's going to happen. It's going to get spent, it's going to get spent on other things that will be needed too in the district.
Yes. It's my job to tell people at that point, board members, that we can't spend that money, or we won't have enough for the tractors.
Okay. I just don't want that to go in that pot, because we've had issues in the past with...
It was the most interesting debate that we had through all of this budget. I would say all the pros and cons were looked at seriously, and we decided to give it a try. It may end up that it's not something that we want to continue with, but because it's never been tried, at least for a long, long time, we decided to give it a shot. But we do understand, I do understand your concerns.
Any other discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve the capital and facility needs.
I have a motion on the floor. I have a second.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Review and consider the approval of the annual APD consortium agreement with racial rights and social...
This is an annual agreement that we need in order to have an adult education program. Without this agreement, we would not be able to run that through the community.
Come on.
I have a motion in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Move on to six, which is on addition to the changes. Review and consider approval of the request by FFA, alumni for District 741 to provide 14,000 for their well project, which will be paid back to District 741 from plot entry fees over the next four years.
So, this was discussed, I do believe that they're good for the money. You know, I don't, we did talk about it coming out of, yeah, I don't think that the plot piece, I mean, they're fighting to get in there. That's my understanding from everybody I've talked with, is that we have more than enough...
I'm not doubting they're good for the money. I'm just saying they legally can do it.
We can legally do it. I would, if the board approves this, I will come up with a simple agreement. When I talked with a business manager today, he said a simple agreement between us, just that he'll, he'll, my business manager who I talked with will review it for me, but there's no issues. We did talk about where we take the money from. In the end, I would recommend out of our capital to start with, because you can't take capital and move it to general. It really doesn't fit in anything in community ed, or, it just doesn't fit very well in there. It'd be nice if it did, but I think if we went that way, we would be stretching things considerably. So if we just take it out of our reserve, lend more capital and start there, I think that'd be the place to use it and pull it.
I have a motion on the floor. I have a second.
I'll have a second.
Second by Sharon. Motion's been made. Seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Could I make a comment?
Second.
Since the last meeting, one of our members, we have another 500 dollars from Bankstar. So we might not need 14,000. We have another grant in progress. So this is just a proposal. If we get more money in from these grants, you know, it'll get paid back sooner. So, that's what we're looking at.
Great.
And thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Move on to personnel. Moving on to personnel, first issue. Review and consider approval of resolution placing my, on there on point.
Point.
Oh, eight seven. FTE, unrequested leave of absence effective at the end of 2012, 2013 school year.
This is the second piece of the process that we need to follow in order to, to do this. Certainly, we will be looking around to see if there's adjustments that need to be made. If we don't make this timeline, then there is no adjustment, and we cannot do this even if we want to.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Can I have a second?
Do we have a second?
I saw a second, can I have a second?
You can.
Okay, ask the initial motion. Do I have any questions?
Board, second, no, board can't second, I don't know.
Chair can.
Chair can.
Oh, second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second for Cal. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Review and consider approval of resolution placing dying 40, point two four two FTE, unrequested leave of absence effective at the end of 2012, 2013 school year.
Make that motion.
I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion's been made in second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Review and consider approval of the following staff members who will be teaching the Pansyl area summer morning targeted services path program. Jennifer Wors, Kim Jones, and Sue Tisha.
This is run through targeted services and, for itself, so there's no cost to this school.
I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Cal. All those in favor, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving to personnel, any additions to the agenda? Number four, review and consider approval of the retirement of Ken Borg effective June 7th, 2013.
This is a lay retirement, we certainly want to thank Ken for all the service to the district. So I would certainly recommend that we approve.
We haven't posted any, so?
Uh, we have not posted it yet this time. Well, we, we really would like to have you guys approve it before we-
That would be great. Jesus.
I'm not that quick.
Okay.
So moved.
I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second? Motion's been made in second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Review, on number five, review and consider approval of one-year agreement with Jim Decker, technology specialist.
Board members, these, all of these are really pertaining to this school year, so it's really retro pay that they will get from this year. Through this slide, me just having new, new negotiations, I've been nice about I got this done earlier, but we also just recently, and this worked real hard to get these done by this board meeting. Mr. Decker has not gotten a raise in two years. Right now, he works with us and he works with Eden Valley Watkins. Eden Valley Watkins is paying, I think, at $51 an hour at this point. We were at 48, the negotiations committee discussed, and came up with a recommendation of 49.50 for Mr. Decker. Mr. Decker has accepted that, so it would be a dollar fifty increase for $1,000 that we do, he does not get any other than just salary. Any questions on that particular piece? So that would be a $5900 increase.
So moved.
I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Cal. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number six, review and consider approval of one-year agreement with Don, the mayor, buildings and grounds supervisor.
Again, this is for the current year that we just finished. What the negotiation figure is recommending is a 1.5% salary increase. That comes to a total of $735, that 1.5, plus 3%, or 3%, $300 on his 403B matching. That brings him up to 2,000 matching, and that is the same as most of the other groups' salary. The total increase for this particular piece, when you look at FICA and PERA, and any, you know, health insurance, life insurance, long-term, sometimes that is affected, would come to 1.82%.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made in second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Number seven, review and consider approval of a one-year agreement with Matt DeCousen, Community Education and Fitness Center Director.
For the recommendation for Matt again, and this is for this current year, so it'd be retroactive pay, was a 2% increase on the salary. That would be $1,360 for that. And he currently has, in a $5 increase on his cell phone, he currently has $35 on that. And when we discussed cell phones, we felt that $40 really was where the district needed to be, so the $5 would raise him up to that. The other thing that we did put on was a one-day flex vacation day on there. So there's two pieces I'm gonna give you. If you do not count the flex day, which we all, we do, I looked at it two ways. One is that there's only dollars going towards that, but it costs the district the day of his work. It's a point, 2.99% increase without looking at those, that additional flex day. Okay, with, with all the benefits and everything else. If you include the flex day into that piece, then it's a 3.42% increase. Okay, so his, his base salary was increased 1360, $5 on the cell phone would be $60 for, for that piece. And then again, I can certainly go through all of them, but FICA and TRA, like, as, as you go up, some of those do change. So I can give you more information if you want, so it depends on how much you want.
Any questions?
Well, my only question would be, was there anything else in there that was changed from the contract before?
No, the, oh, thank you. There was one more piece that was in there, that, a language piece, that, in fact, let's do it this way, I'm just gonna walk through the, the contract. Most of the, the pieces that are on here are just striped out because of the year. All right? So when I look at that, there were two pieces that we had to add language, where one was a floating day, so this is the way it reads, and this was the addition. The Community Education Director will be, also be credited with one floating vacation day each year. Floating vacation days must be used in the fiscal year in which they were earned. So that's one piece of it. Okay? Then, everything else is the same. Some changes on, just again, the dates and times. And then we did change his family illness leave. Okay, and I'm gonna read what it was first, and then what we've agreed to change it to. It says a maximum of 96 hours and he will be allowed for family illness leave. All the other pieces talk about being able to use all of it for, I mean, if you've got a sick child, for instance, that came down with a major illness, and he had ill, sick leave accumulated, that would say that he wouldn't even be able to use that if he had a child that got extremely sick. So what it was, was changed to is that employees may use all of their accumulated sick leave to provide care for ill or injured children. Okay, that was the change again. Employees may use all of their accumulated sick leave to provide care for ill or injured children. Then the rest of the contract, really, other than the cell phone where it was struck from 35 to 40, is just strictly days other than the salary increase, which is, as, as, as that piece, and that would be then 69, 360 for that. And that's the other piece that was struck. And then it's just the days that were taken. So other than those languages, that's all that was changed. I think that's great, I think that's, that's the way I'll do it in all honesty, just take the contract that we looked at, the pieces that were struck, and go through it that way with any changes. I think his was the only one that there was any real language change, other than just additions.
I'll entertain the motion. Motion's been made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Number eight, review and consider approval of a one-year agreement with District, District 741 Principals Association.
There's two different pieces to this. Both, we're recommending that both administrators get a 1% increase. Okay, for Ms. Laura, that would come to $973. For Mr. Orline, that would come to $850. The total package for that alone would be 1.59% when you take a look at FICA and all those other pieces. All right? But there is one, one more piece of this, is that there was a discrepancy between what the elementary principal had for vacation days and what the high school principal had for vacation days. The elementary principal had 25 vacation days. The elementary principal had, high school principal 20, elementary principal 25 vacation days. We really do want to get that even. So what we're recommending is that we buy back those days. So it can be looked at as new money, but we're also getting five additional workdays in place of that. Okay, does everybody got that? So what it would do is we would buy back five vacation days from Dave. It would cause his workdays to go up to 228, just like Lori. Because right now, he has 223 workdays, Lori has 228 workdays.
Now, that's just a one-time shot.
This is a one-time shot, it goes on there, but do be aware that it goes on there and then it sits on the cell. He continues to work those five days, he would be just like the high school principal at that time, where he would have 128 working days every year, but also that amount stays on the salary as it, as it goes. If that makes sense, I hope I've explained that well enough. So I'm just gonna go through the contract. Just changes, really, in, in just the schedule. There was one other removal from their contract, but it was really something that was all dated. This, the pay schedule and stuff was just removed because that fit into the 10, 11 contract. There was one other piece that was removed because it doesn't fit, and that's the school district shall contribute off to the full cost of a premium amount towards the 1,720, 200 deductible plan. Those are no longer offered, so the language that referred to that was eliminated, and the principals are aware of that, it just did not pertain anymore to their contract. Other than that, the, one other piece that was added, currently, we, they were getting $20 for a cell phone, and I do know that I have been able to contact the principals whenever I need to, and we did raise that to $40. Okay, so it went from 20 to 40. And that is reflected in, in their contract. Other than that, in just changing dates and schedules, the, the change for the workdays if the board accepts that, just reads from, in the case, the elementary principal, it shall be 25 days of vacation. That's been eliminated just to say each principal will earn 20 working days of annual paid vacation each contract year. So that would be the change. And then just years. And then the salary schedule at the end. So the, let's see, anything else? The, the total cost of the five days would be 1,924. To be exact, 1,924, 89. And that's based on his current contract for, per day. So with not counting those five days, it's a 1.59% increase, with those days, it would be a 2.4% increase. Just that, I wanted to give that both ways because you're actually getting five days of work also for a higher percent. Any other questions in regards to this? So other than the 1%, the five days and the cell phone increase, that would be it, those were the changes in this contract.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, they can go. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. I'm delighted. Review and consider approval of one-year agreement with Max Mahner for Activities Coordinator.
With, with Max, the, the recommendation was a 2% increase to salary, that would come to $840. He does not get any of his cell phones, and I can speak from personal things, particularly this year with all the rain and everything else, we, I do believe strongly that he needs to, to be able to be in touch with me as much, so we are recommending that he gets $40 towards the cell phone plan. And the last thing was two floating vacation days. I just know that I try to get to as many activities as I can, and Max is usually at that one or another one. If you look at the cost, with all the vacation days, it would be a 2.0 sub-percent increase. With the vacation days, it would be a 2.76% increase. When you look at his contract, the changes other than days again, would be the Activities Director will be credited with two floating vacation days each year to be used on non-student contact days. Floating vacation days must be used in fiscal year in which they earned. And just some days cost dollars to make it current with the, the 2012, 2013 year. And then salary reimbursement, the Activities Coordinator will be reimbursed for a month, not to exceed $40 per month for cell phone use. Activities Coordinator must submit a voucher request monthly with an attached cell phone statement for reimbursement. Then you'll never change again his salary at the end, which shows that the increase of $1,320 to his salary.
I'll entertain the motion. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Now, I'm sure I do want to mention one other thing as far as negotiations. The reason that this is a one-year contract, normally it would be a two-year contract, is that I really do want to put everybody on the same negotiations cycle. That would mean that the district would have one-year negotiations in which it's settled, but then one-year piece where we wouldn't have to worry about that. And I, I do know that because that's still an op year, that would be something if the board chooses to bring me back, that we have, we can discuss and look at. But I think it would be very beneficial to the district to have a year that we don't have to worry about any increases to the budget anyplace, so that's why I'm recommending that we just give the administrators the one year. And I'll, I will start with all of the groups moving forward. So as soon as with the approval of these, I will start talking about a two-year contract with all the groups.
Are they just all got approved, so I guess you're gonna be a busy guy?
Yes, I am.
Moving on to the informational reports.
Matt, I do apologize, I did put Matt on there, and he had told me that he has a workshop today that, so he could, yes, Matt.
I have a second date for him.
Oh, sorry.
He's the first one, he's not here. He's not here.
Yes, I don't know. I agree, yeah. He's not here, but...
Okay.
Go ahead. So, I'll, I'll go. Well, I thank the school board again, uh, for, for David and I, both for our contracts. We really do enjoy working for the Painsville area schools and helping their kids and teachers provide quality programs, so thank you very much. Um, I would like to kind of talk, we had a very good end of the school year, wrapped up with finals and grades, and I think the graduates left in high spirits, and we had one people graduating ceremony, and I thank all the board members for being there and participating. Uh, we wrapped up the year with the teachers with an eye observation in-service training, and as we move down this road, I, you'll hear more about this. The workshop this time was on what they call design question one. It's working with teachers on posting their learning goals and their rubrics or their scales, on how kids are, are, um, seeing themselves, as well as how teachers are rating them on, are they achieving that learning goal? And we look at the learning goals as being synonymous with standards, which our professional learning communities all year this year have worked on aligning our, the state standards with our curriculum and putting them in student-friendly terms. So, this workshop worked with teachers on how to implement that into the daily lesson plans, because there's been a tremendous amount of work done and studies done on what benefits kids the most in looking at growth in students. One of the things that came out highest at about thirty-four percent was if kids know what their learning goal is, that they are more apt to move towards that. That was kind of that big bang for the buck, so that's where we'd like to start, with the eye observation program, working with teachers and developing in that, um, and making that part of their everyday classroom routine. So, that's what the in-service was about. Um, the second one our building is going to look at doing is engagement of students. Uh, with the implementation of the student advisory this year, uh, teachers really feel strongly about working that in, um, to our program next year as well, with that eye observation and, and looking at how are we performing and bringing those pieces into the classroom. So, it was a great workshop, uh, and following that part of the day, our professional learning communities met, uh, worked again on those standards and how what they heard in the eye observation training, how that gelled with what they were doing with the standards. Uh, we gave them some things to look at over the summer, so we can come back at the beginning of the year next year with our units, the very first units they're doing, being able to start off, uh, right away with having those as part of their lesson plans. So, it was a very good day, and teachers worked hard, you know, it was the end of the year, wrapping up. They knew they had grades to finish up, but they really did dig in on the in-service time, so it was a good day. Um, then, kind of moving on with, uh, you know, the year doesn't start, stop once the kids leave. We are finishing up with end-of-the-year reports, uh, getting our transcripts out for all our seniors, uh, those types of things are going on, as well as setting up our summer programming. Uh, we're doing a lot of interviewing this week, so I hope to have, um, some proposals for the su- summer positions, as well as new teachers for us next time. Any questions that you might have for our secondary board?
Can you type out the schedule, though?
Oh, um, the next-year day schedule?
Yes.
Is that what you're, okay. Um, there's gonna be two proposals, um, that I'm going to bring to the board at your next meeting to have you look at. Uh, one is expanding the high school and middle school day ten minutes, uh, five minutes in the morning and five minutes at the end of the day. Uh, it won't change, uh, the bus route in the beginning of the day. We'll change the bus route pickup time at the end of the day for five minutes. Uh, that will allow us to give back that time we took in order to put in the student advisory time this year and continue with that program. So, I will have a schedule for you to look at, uh, the next board meeting. The other proposal I'm going to bring to have, uh, the policy committee look at first and then bring to the board as well, is going to be a change in the wording of the exemplary attendance policy. I would like to look at how we categorize vacations taken, um, between having them excused or unexcused. Uh, I would like to change that, um, from how it currently looks. Currently, if a family takes a vacation and they're with a parent, um, it's considered excused, but if that parent would take another parent's child, even though that parent tells us they're going, it would be considered unexcused for that student. So, I would like us to look at that and reword that. So, I'll be bringing that to the next board meeting, or policy committee and then to the board. Okay? So, if you have some feedback on either of those, please, you can call or email.
What?
Expand ten minutes as well.
What? Is the elementary?
The elementary would be a, just, it'd be a five-minute at the end of the day, because it's the bus.
Oh, yeah.
There'd be adjusting high school in the morning, but there, there would be that.
Would you be giving back these minutes in between classes, then?
It doesn't do that. We looked at that, and we just felt it would be maybe extending the day too long. It does extend a minute on one of the periods, but not all of them.
Yeah, part of, part of the problem is that, we, you know, we talked about in the morning bus, we had in, you know, but then we already have some kids, students getting picked up awfully early in the morning, so I wasn't willing to let our buses go out any more early than our, they are, research would say that we should be going the other way versus earlier in the morning. And the problem that we have, of course, at the end of the day, is that we have an awful lot of kids in activities, so if you extend the end of the day out much more to give kids more time between classes, then it starts to have an impact at the end of the day, too. Certainly, this will be something we'll look at, we'll bring to the board, have some discussion, and can be adjusted year to year if we find things work well or if we find things don't work well.
Any other questions from the board?
Thank you. Next.
A couple of things that will be on the board agenda for next, um, agenda, hopefully, they just came, are involving our hockey co-op. Um, we've had a request from Wilmer Community Christian School to join our co-op, which will make our name even longer, but, um, in order for that to happen, the current co-op would actually have to be dissolved and then reformed. And, um, secondly, every single district in the co-op would have to approve of that before it would, um, be okay. I do have an endem that was put together that I'll email out. I figured it would be a lot easier to do that than to explain everything, but, um, from the athletic director's standpoint, the contention kind of went, um, New London's way, because the people that are, um, going to be involved in the co-op if this happens, live in the New London district, it doesn't really pertain or impact our district much, except for, um, in a scenario in the future, let's say a student open and rolls to ACGC, and then ACGC wants to co-op with us in hockey, now that would be a, I guess, a way that we could try and get that student to be in our school instead, if that makes sense. But, Wilmer Community Christian, um, we're probably not gonna drop those students to Painsville by not, um, having the co-op, um, be a part of it. So, um, also with the hockey co-op, a change in cancellation policy. Currently, it was if any school in the co-op was closed due to weather or out early due to weather, practice was canceled, games were canceled, all of that. But with the addition of Wilmer Community Christian, um, school, if that's a potential, and it was an issue this year even without them, um, with some of the western areas of New London, they, um, they would actually host some practices, basketball and different sports in their school, and they just, because of their outline areas, closed school or, or for whatever reason, but we had to close practices and games for the co-op agreement, that if any school was out, practices, games are out, and it... And there is a recommendation, I'll include that in the email, too, but what it's going to change to is that the host sites, so basically, it would be our exact, um, policy for our school anyways, where if our school is out, there's no activities, because we are one of the host sites for practices and games. If Painsville's out, there would be, so it doesn't really impact us again, um, but makes it easier for hockey to exist, depending if one school would have to... BBD, for instance, is in our co-op this year, and they didn't have any skaters. There's nobody on the team. If they closed, by rule, we should have not had practice or games. So, most of the time, other schools were closed, too, so it wasn't an issue then. I'll email those things out. All of our teams and individuals for the spring are completed. Some of the Minnesota State High School League state tournaments are still going on, so we're finishing, uh, two thousand and thirteen spring scheduling was a nightmare, but we had buses and officials and opponents at the time. I was so nervous that we got buses intersect at some point in time. I mean, there was, the schedule was just completely redone, and all schools did that. Um, all our schedules for next year are published on the West Central Conference website, but just so the board is aware, because this, uh, schedules do go into the calendar that we hand out at the, uh, that keep the quality puts on, and we hand out at registration, golf schedules will not be in there. The West Central Conference has not established their golf schedule yet, so we're waiting on that, and we're waiting on some things for some dance schedule as well, but otherwise, all of our high school schedules are complete, should be in that calendar. We even have the right locations for hockey this year. We're finding it soon enough, so that was good. Um, we're, uh, finishing up interviews and going through the process for our girls' basketball candidate. Um, I will be requesting when we have a candidate, a special board meeting because of the summer activities and events that are going on. I, I don't think that it's fair for our girls' basketball program to have to wait if it would be two weeks or whatever it might be. Um, so, that's where we are there. Does anybody have any questions for me?
All right. Just a number of things. Um, there's been a number of things that I've neglected too, too long that I haven't had a work session for or have discussions at the board. It's really up to the board whether, work, work sessions seem to work well. If they become more intimate, we can face each other now, these discussions. But a number of things that we really do need to set, things in motion to start having discussions about, just a few would be, uh, how we want to gather input from community members, uh, how we want to deal with email on the part of the school boards, uh, naming up facilities, been brought up early in the year. We haven't really discussed or come up with a conclusion on that. Um, developing board governance policies, we had talked about, uh, going paperless board meetings, so what I will be doing in the very near future, I'm talking about probably sending it out tomorrow, is a number of days that I would look at after work session, and then putting an, an agenda together so that the, the board and the public knows what we're gonna talk about on, on what days. But I would like to get that out to the board even tomorrow, as far as the days, and pick a day and then get that posted. Remember that we need to post three days before we have any kind of meeting. Um, so, I'll pick some days in kind of a little bit in the future, just to make sure that we can find a day that we can post early enough in. So, unless the, I, I just think the work sessions have worked pretty well when we've had them, um, does happen with that, so I, I think that's the way I'll go, unless the board would rather not go that way. Okay? Um, we'll be starting, uh, two-year negotiations with all, all groups, so if you're on negotiation committees, be aware, I'm gonna start setting those times up also. Again, we need to get three days. One thing I do want to bring up, um, that, I was reminded of, that if we do have a committee meeting, that committee meeting has three members on, if a fourth member shows up just to listen, that does violate the open meeting rules, um, and we can't do that. Uh, if there's just two board members on, and somebody comes and listens, then we're fine, but you can't reach that for them. So, uh, if you come to a meeting and there's three people sitting there, and, you know, I will tell the person who's come in to, that they can't be there, alright? So, just be aware. Final rule, it costs, we did lose, uh, four students right at the end of the year. Just, um, I wish I could've said that we were stable, but we did have, um, a, a student move out. They just moved out of the district. Uh, then we had a, a couple students that we needed to drop because they no longer were attending school, and as much as we did to contact them to get them back, we couldn't find out where they were at, and after fifteen days of not coming to school, you'd have to drop them. And then we also had, um, a couple students just dropped out. Uh, those don't affect us as far as attendance, because they were older stu-, older grade students, but, um, up until that time, our attendance had been pretty, pretty solid. Um, another thing that I neglected that we're gonna start, policy committee, be aware that we're gonna start reviewing those policies and coming back. Um, I wanna look at hiring policy and a number of other policies that we need to start reviewing. We do have a policy committee, we'll bring that to them first, while the discussion, then bring it forward to the board. Okay? Uh, did a number of surveys. Um, if you weren't aware, I think I did send you copies of the surveys. I'm not sure, did I send you a copy of the last one, the administrative survey? I, I think I forgot to forward that. I'm gonna forward that to you, just so you can take a look at it. Um, we did three surveys, total, a student-living survey, that we got the data, and I wanna take a look at it before I, I forward it to it, talk about it at the meeting. It's certainly something that as we start looking at developing a strategic plan, that'll be great information for us to include on those types of things, and also, um, just some baseline information as we continue to go down the road and look at those every year. We also did a staff survey, same thing. Uh, now, the, the survey for the administrators, that really will be used by me to help develop the goals and improvements for the, the administrators. That was the two principles. Alright? So, those are, those are all, certainly I'll be sharing information with the community and the board on the student and the staff survey. But like I said, the administrative survey, that's for me and the administrators to look at, areas to improve on and work on. Uh, just wanted to give my, tip my hat to Jay Thompson. He has resigned from the National Honor Society as the advisor, uh, for several years. They have really built that to be a great program, and I just wanted to congratulate him and thank him for that particular time. He'll certainly continue on, um, in his other functions, but he has resigned for that, and Lori will find another person for that. I do have a thank you note, if the board wants, the board or person wants to read it, just from a, a staff member of that, that I've received.
It's, hello, Painsville School Board, thanks much for the staff recognition. It's a pleasure to work in the school district, where teachers and all staff are valued and appreciated. Have a great summer.
I'm sure it is.
It's from Bill and Jean Thornton.
And then finally, just test scores. We've got some small information. I, I went to the test score site today, and, boy, I don't know why they don't make it easier. Um, the test scores aren't embargoed at this time, so we can't release them. As we can start to release them, we'll bring those test scores forward to the board. Um, I think they were embargoed until twenty-sixth of June, if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct.
Why is that?
Not, first, the modified tests aren't in all of the different areas, and then they have to go through. We have a chance to look at students, and if, say, a student has transferred out of your district or into your district, and just basically a data cleansing piece for our Mars people to look at and make sure that we're, we're accounting for the kids we have during that time, and other districts are doing the same.
And aren't they norming one of the tests also?
What?
Aren't they norming one of the tests?
The, the reading test.
The reading test.
The reading ones, we won't have that till August.
Yeah, we don't get that information. I, I try to, frankly, I don't understand why it takes so long. The writing test, they're able to get us tentative information back immediately, which I would think would be the one test that would take the longest to evaluate. Um, we get that back immediately, but the reading test, which is also, I think, was done on the computer this year?
The reading was, yeah, but they are norming that one, so that won't be...
But they've never gotten this, that, that...
Very nice. But the kids...
So, anyway, as we get more of the information back, we'll share it with the board and with the community.
And the students will actually be getting their writing and their math scores, their individual scores. That will actually be going out to the kids, um, with report cards. Uh, so, their individual reports, but we just don't have district information, so, for those tests.
And then one final thing, I don't know if the board has, but the city would like to put, um, area center signup on our property by the, it'd be by the Armory and Twenty-three, pointing towards that. So, I don't know if the, I don't know if you would need a policy for that, or just allow me to allow them to put that signup. I, I can pass that picture on, so you can, you can just see what the signup's like, but it's just, uh... I can pass that picture on so you can just see what the sign looks like, but it's just a, it's a.
I'll take it.
Area center sign, we're not being warned. They will do all of what that goes with.
And they're reading all the polls?
I was gonna say.
I think they'll take care of all of that, ask for that sign. So, unless the board has, um, a desire to vote on, I'll just give the city permission to do that. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Any other board chair? Share.